Okay, we're gonna call the regular meeting of the Plain Township Board Trustees for September 24, 2018. For order, will everybody stand and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First order of business, the agenda is before us. Is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff? Okay, with no additions or changes, the agenda will stand as presented. The first order of business is speeding on Firestone Road. And I asked for that to be put on there, only for the record. Joe probably can go a little bit more detail, because I had a conversation with the husband, I guess the wife had called Joe. It seems to be in the peak hours, in the morning, and the hours after school, that's out. As soon as you turn off of east and heading north on Firestone, as soon as you get around that S curve, or that curve, it really opens up and people are really laying on the gas going through there. And these people had their dog hit the other night by a speeder. And the dog was killed. And I think, Joe, you said in about a week, we're gonna put the speed trailer out there ourselves, hopefully.
We'll have that out there earlier this week.
But the resident, I know Joe called, the resident said that his driveway, he's got a triple Y driveway, he's walking the back of cruiser into. I have it in my car, so after the meeting. Yeah, I have it in my car after the meeting, I'll get you the address. But as soon as we can get a cruiser out there in the morning, better for these folks.
Yeah, and if, like I said before, if anybody has, if they let us, if they want us to sit in their driveway, just give us an address. And guys love that, because that gets us out of the road, gets us out of sight.
Yeah, he's right across the street from the Oakwood. The Oakwood Golf Course, there on Firestone.
Okay, yeah, I'll get that address, I hope the guys know.
I got it out in my truck, I left it out in the truck, I apologize. But I told him I would go on record tonight with it, to make sure that, get extra patrols, some cars parked in the driveway, slow speeders. And he said it was in the morning, on the way to school, and in the afternoon, coming home from school. So I told Joe the day, I have a feeling that we're gonna find out a lot of these painters live over there in Hunter's Ridge. So, but we need to get them slowed down over there. Does anybody else got anything for the sheriff's office? Anybody in the audience have anything for the sheriff's office? Okay, hearing nothing, now to close the sheriff's report. We will go to new business, and the first item is Mr. Williams?
Yeah, first item for new business is the false alarms.
So we're on new business on the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Now, for the record, do you wanna let know who Mike Lisa is?
Yeah, she's had a personal family medical issue this past week tonight, so she is not in attendance. Number two is the professional surveyors of Ohio Fall Seminar in Newark, Ohio, authorization for zoning director to attend.
I'll move adoption, second. Discussion, I had a couple of questions about that. I think Lisa Denny answered those questions, she said she'll talk to you. So I think my individual questions were answered, because you use that for things around the cemetery and some other things.
Well, absolutely. Do you wanna approve property splits, come through the township, review adization maps, legal descriptions, utilize these ones and rates of way.
I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, that was actually used for township reasons, and she fully justifies that. So thank you for that personally. Another two, okay. Okay, if no further discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Number three?
Number three, I'm gonna turn over to Chief Snyder.
Yes, thank you. Just, this is just some information for the board, just letting know, based on some of the goal settings that were set out, about a year after what I did, as far as education and training for our officers and line officers. This is part of that. It's an officer development program through the state of Ohio, through the State Ohio Archies Association. And Jackson Township has been hosting these for the last couple of years. And I wanna get this started, so we're currently gonna have five members attending. That class in November runs for two weeks in November. And the cost of that, there's been a reduction in the class based on some grants, some money that was given before the class. So, class usually over $600, we're only $250 a piece.
And you sent, you sent what, five?
Five, yes.
Chief, ultimately, this just rolls up as really part of training requirements that are even within their contract?
No, this is all over. This basically is, a lot of their job descriptions are based on some information that the NPA requires. You've got that information in front of you regarding, you know, the standard of NPA 1021. And it talks about qualifications, professional qualifications for officers. And that's what this program is targeted towards by Officer One and Two. So, there's a series of these programs, these classes, Fire Officer One is the first one. There's a Fire Officer Two, then eventually there's a Fire Officer Three, based on the level of management, I'm sending you gentlemen to.
And these are currently existing officers of these forces that they're taking?
Yes, they're currently existing officers we have.
So you're looking at a cost of roughly $1,250?
Yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion? Try to, I think this was a, this was a. Do I have anything else? Disappointing, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to number four.
Number four was going to be informational only as well for Lisa, so I'd like to remove it. I didn't think that would deserve it. But why don't we take four off for next time?
Was that the one that had policies for communication?
I think I'm the one that kicked started this a little bit. And it's, it's really simple, and I guess Lisa tried to explain, I guess, and staff here, I heard those a little confusing. And I think basically, you're already showing that some of these now is in front of us. I think that's all we're asking. I think this, you know, this email the next day, and you're gone on a seminar, personally, I don't go for it. And I don't think these two do. We just, out of respect, I think that we wanna know more about the seminars, we wanna know where you're gonna go. And when you do go, I think we'd like to have something on our mailbox showing that you were there. I don't think that's too much to ask. But I know that, in my place of work, there's no way I could call up tomorrow and say, "I'm not coming in today, I'm going to Columbus on a seminar." This doesn't jive, this doesn't work, definitely. I think that's where, it seems like we're getting in that trend. So all I'm asking is, and it's already been presented today, you showed that, Danny showed on here to us the explanation of your survey. Chief has done an explanation of this class that he's going for the officers. So if you guys are going to seminars, and you see that, I understand a mechanic seminar in Columbus, which I didn't really think about that. I think out of respect, we need to know, A, why are you going there? B, is it gonna be beneficial to you and to our residents? And also, you know, you're gonna be missing a day of work, and you don't know, you know, you're not there that day, we don't even know. So I think, you know, things have gotta just change a little bit. I think you just need to present in front of us, and when you do go to these seminars, after it's been approved, you still like something. I'm only speaking to myself, I can't speak for these two. I would like something, I know about showing that you guys have been there. I don't think it's too much to ask. That's all on that, that was my request.
I don't know how you two feel about, welcome to.
No, I think, I just think for verification purposes, since we're paying for the seminar, I think if they bring us back something from the seminar, saying that they were present. What's the place, number one? In details, Scott, I don't know if you have any ideas about that, but we need to know about it more than a day in advance, usually. And historically, our department has done a fine job managing this stuff themselves, and making sure that the appropriate courses and everything are being used and done. But again, I agree, you know, for the most part without, that, you know, we need a little bit of advanced notice of what the seminar is for, and just to give us some type of verification to be able to say, "We're actually attending." Do you want it to be approved by two of us, or?
I don't wanna micromanage, I don't wanna micromanage things, I mean, we've got certain line items within the department head's budgets, I think they need to use discretion. But no, we're definitely going out of town. I'd like to know, I mean, I think, like, my first year, I know, it probably threw some people for a loop. Like, when we went to the winter conference, and I said, "Hey, what classes should we take? And what do we expect to get out of that, and bring back?" You know, everybody's like, "Whoa, what's going, what's going on here?" Well, I mean, when we're expecting township resources, I think we ought to know high level what's going on there. But, you know, if it's a, you know, something through regional planning, or something through the county engineer's office, or something, we're still in the county. I don't necessarily know, I don't wanna know about that. You know, if I got Danny going out of town for surveyor's conference, or saying I got Rob and Derek going out, like we said, pub last year for some person, I wanna know about things like that. I think very well would. I think it's gonna be long distance ones, once we're going out of town. Could be extended day of stay, or additional call, you know. But we saw your employees in Columbus, or Toledo, or wherever it is. You know, we know why you're there.
Okay, let's go to number five.
Number five is to authorize a purchase of office furniture for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Also move. I will second that.
Discussion aspect, what? I mean, is there, do you know if there's anything specific that's been selected out that has become a racist total? Or, I don't think that would prove.
Bottom line is, I just, I looked at it, that's the provided function for meeting space, as well as workspace. And some bookshelves for the keeping of all the ancillary items and documents. I think one of those in there was a chair that hasn't been selected, they just threw it away, isn't it?
You can't work at a table forever.
I mean, preferably not, but I'll do what you need me to do.
I like the torture, working back in the old dispatch room, personally.
My shins are bruised from working at that whole shelf, yes. But that's up to you guys.
No, that's fine. I've already made a lot of your follow-up.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you, and let's go to the fiscal officer report, Mr. Flex.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal officer number one is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize a payment in the pending warrants in an amount of $357,118.80 attached to it, to have made part of the minutes.
Also move. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize a regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So, Mr. Haas? Second. I'll second. Any discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number three is a request for a resolution by Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize a payment for the following medical claims provided by health care.
So move. I'll second it, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number four is just the investment report.
Given for exact month, exact date of now, pretty much? Where do we start rate shopping now?
Yeah, we'll start looking for rates. I don't know if they're gonna be any better, I mean, everything's pretty standard, but we'll probably have it by next May, you'll get an idea.
Any yield on those? This guy's, it's horrible. It's absolutely horrible.
The second one was actually really good compared, compared to everything else at the time.
Okay.
And fiscal officer number five is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to certify the lighting districts established with Plain Township as shown in the list for the tax year of 2013.
So move. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number six is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize a refund for overpayments as provided by emergency medical services by Ohio Building.
So move. I'll second it, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Fiscal officer number seven is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize the public transfers.
I will second the three to pay, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
That'll conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. We go to the administrators' report.
We have one under administrator number one. And I think I'd like to reword it a little bit, because I think I know what we're trying to do. Is this to have the dollar an hour of Mr. Skolmich's wage paid from the general fund?
Correct.
Okay, because it's paid right now out of other funds, and we wanna take a dollar of it.
Out of the general.
Okay, well, the way it reads now, we have his hourly rate at $1 an hour, I'm sure he'd be disappointed to hear that. And we'd be in trouble. So the federal wage laws, I'm sure, but let it reflect that maybe to say, to adjust Rob Skolmich's hourly rate, let's say, to reflect $1 an hour to be paid out of the general fund.
$1 an hour increase.
Okay, and, but it's being paid out of a different fund than the rest of this.
Yes. Did you say, hourly increase, so, hourly rate to be increased $1 per hour?
And then to be paid out of the general fund. Okay, does that make sense, Mr. Flex?
The increase has already happened.
Right.
It's just the payment, so, so how do you want that worded?
I, here's how I would say it, to adjust Rob Skolmich's hourly rate to reflect $1 per hour to be paid out of the general fund.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, that's what you have for your report.
I'll make a motion to move on that. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Thank you again, Mr. Williams, and we will go to the fire department report, Chief Snyder.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a change order by a general contractor. An upgrade in the paint of the apparatus base, just convert latex paint, they're using epoxy paint.
Also move, fire number one. Second, discussion. As a point of clarification, this is for the sake of durability.
Washability, durability.
And we'll be painting it less often, so.
Yeah, we can scrub the walls, another paint. If it's five or six years, you know, if you paint this way, we can powder wash it, scrub the walls, and then.
It makes sense, but you know, the other thing that's so annoying about stuff like this, is it should've been in there right from, right from the get-go. It should've been, right, it should've been. Because you can't, they use flat paint, and you put one print on it, and you can't wipe it off. And you're right, in a place like that, it shouldn't have been gone. And those guys come in from those fire calls sometimes.
We've tried it routinely, routinely, you know, washing, washing the walls over here.
All right, further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Item number two is to authorize a purchase of John Deere SUV 625i with the state of Ohio contract. Again, just keep in mind that we did receive a $5,000 donation from the Township Rotary towards this vehicle.
Also move. I'll second it. Discussion, for the sake of clarification, Chief, the reason this investment's being sought has to be made by the township, is for the sake of all the development within the park, and specifically the trail system, and the lack or challenge of accessibility on the trails, with any type of.
Trails and any sporting events, or any of the races we have, that we can use that along that, you know, the park area, the trailer area, as well.
Now, when that's procured and so forth, that'll be marked properly with fire to them. We do something to recognize that, that road.
Yeah, they did ask me about that, and I said, "Absolutely," put something up to reflect it. And that was, that was related from them, so.
I think I'll have the board when Lisa gets back, like, to make sure there's some type of formal, thank you, or. They've done, obviously, for the.
They wanna do an article in February, they wanna do something, does it have a due date in February that they wanna put together? And do an article on that.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Item number three is to authorize first payment for landscaping trees and shrubs from Raisings North Street. But you see the attached quote, the price that we're asking for here to be authorized is less than what the quote is, because when they originally came out, they did a design on that, there were some trees and some other things that we're not gonna be putting in. So, based on that, the quote we asked before is less than what he had priced out originally. He also did tell me, too, that, based on this time of year, that those prices are gonna be reduced. I don't know what else he was spending, $10,000, that's even, I haven't asked before right now, but I just put it just in case, but we're looking for something way under that chip.
Also move. Second, discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, will the road department report, Mr. Isenoff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is a resolution to authorize the installation of a traffic control device in the form of a stop sign at Stone Crossing, a harness circle going westbound and eastbound.
Also move. Second, discussion. And then, once that other allotment to the east is developed, we can revisit.
Well, this is gonna tie that in, because.
Well, we're gonna keep it a remaining a four-way? Because the other way coming out, there's only one house and a driveway there.
Yeah, we're gonna keep it a four-way stop for right now. I've talked to the county engineers, they don't have a problem with it, because of the site problem looking east if you're coming out of harness circle. It's not a speed control thing, it's a site problem, and they're agreeing with it.
Site problems open in Lexington. Yeah, right now, right now, there's no stop sign at all. I saw a closed one the other day, I worked on it.
So, and all four quarters that are already existing, that's not part of the new phase of Lexington, so.
Yes, somebody came down off a harness circle, and didn't take into consideration that Stone Crossing now continues east. My car was coming the other direction, and they barely missed each other. So, and also will all of these rules be put up?
Next week.
Next week. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Item number two is informational, some pictures of the completed project, what we did with the county engineer on Mar Court and Seventh Street. We covered the shape, ditch. Put a new berm out at the road, because our road was falling in, we built it out, and put some heavy stone there to keep it from eroding. And we got some new barge route up there, it turned out real well. Took some trees out.
And just for the record, too, I wanted to thank the township administrator, Brian Luther, and Richard Rayula, the Star County Commissioner, for expediting this, and getting everybody moving quickly on this.
And item number three is, we got the results for our speed zone study we had down Orient Road. It did come back favorable for reducing the speed from 35 mile per hour, other than putting some new curb signs in the S curve, and reducing that speed to 25 mile per hour. But those are only recommendations. We'll get those put up as soon as we can. They're not really enforceable, so there's no resolution for it. I just, we weren't able to get the speed reduced.
I agree, but they're asking, they're telling us we can put up 25 mile per hour speed in the S curve. But if we put up a 25 mile an hour speed limit, it's not enforceable.
It's not a speed limit.
It's not a speed limit, it's a recommendation.
So you get off the highway, and it says, "Go 20 here," and it says, "60," and you see how fast you need your car to go around that curb? There's no enforcement. It could be a yellow 25 mile per hour sign.
Instead of white.
So it's not enforceable.
Okay.
But it might also attract.
But it might, please, there's some signs there.
Especially the people that want to.
New curb signs, so.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Joe, we go to the zoning report.
Gentlemen, before you, zoning number one, we have five nuisance abatements, Stephen.
So we're on zoning line three. I'll second that, Danny, for the record, you said something that the trash and debris at Roosevelt, 4225 Roosevelt, has been removed, except for the vehicle?
Correct.
And what is the intention with the inoperable vehicle?
Well, the intent will be if they don't, you know, they have to wait out seven days. For the tomorrow, is to get it indoors, remove it, or you call tow. Mr. Williams said we put a pump back this car, they're out.
I don't, I wanna see that. No further discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And zoning number two, you have before you five nuisance payments.
I'll move on, zoning two, eight, three. I will second those. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Eric, I have a question in relation to that. Should we be asking during these, because these technically would be considered a public hearing, should we be asking if anybody's present in the audience to speak?
You certainly can, I seem to remember we used to, and kind of got away from it, when we got a list that were two pages long. But it certainly doesn't hurt.
Collectively?
Yeah.
You'd ask anybody?
If there's anybody here, yeah. I think it's probably good practice to get back to that.
Going forward, I think that we should probably collectively, when we read them off, give the addresses.
It can seem like such a waste, because in 11 years, I think I've heard one person actually show up. And we have them on every single agenda, but in terms of best practice, we.
Yeah, I think for the record, we should show that we ask anybody who's there. Okay, roll call. That's all for zoning, thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's go to parks and facilities, Mr. Ninger.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, item number one is just a discussion about the Schneider curb sign. It was removed from the list this morning, because there. So I.
I thought we said we were gonna have that sign.
We discussed over there with the contractor, was there doing some similar parallels? The sheriff's, right? Because the other thing was essentially, I think, just two brick pillars with, you know, a fixed sign between, if you recall. But then, you said for consistency, we're always talking to the contractor, that we like to see a sign format, a structure that looks similar to that of fire. I think the only thing I noted was, you need to know the cost on electronic versus, say, putting in some type of permanent fixed panel.
That's got a spot laying on it.
Yeah, in there. That was what I, what I recall. I mean, I definitely remember talking to the contractor, though, and saying I would be favorable upon, you know, similar physical build, look us right in the middle, though, they was supposed to get us cost on it, so.
Have we ever got those costs? We've got the cost, and some of the quote, or the pictures of the design. It was scheduled to be on this, and I honestly don't know why. We said we were supposed to remove it. Possibly it's not even on here.
I do know the cost that we did receive was not going to be electronic sign.
No.
It was just going to be way too much.
Yeah, I think what we should do is just put the fixed sign in there and maybe since we're doing the electric, it's going all that back there, that's going to be discussed here.
Electric was going to be for spotlights.
For light to shine on the sign in that nighttime.
It would put messages of upcoming park with letters, you know.
So we had this.
We didn't have any.
Except for what's going in, the structure, the first structure we did.
Was probably good too, Mr. Williams, and I don't know why I'm speaking off.
Scott and Matt, we happened just, we were there.
Right, we all ended up being there at the same time.
We had to be the same time, incidentally, we just.
Yeah, I mean, I concept agreed to the physical structure, I said that.
The idea was outstanding.
Whether or not the.
No, it hasn't been started.
Inner part of it, which was.
I knew we had two.
There is no contract with your price, we got another quote.
We had another quote that was.
Five thousand dollars less, we decided probably we wouldn't go with that.
It wasn't worth the five dollars, because honestly, God, I don't recall.
I don't remember what the first one was, the first one was over twelve thousand dollars or more.
That was the first one?
It was done around.
First one, we got this one down to, I think it was almost four or five thousand dollars different by this other person.
And that's putting the fixed placard.
Putting something very similar to what we originally talked about. We wanted to put the badge.
But also with a message board of some.
That you could change the letters on.
Yeah, yes, upcoming events.
Yours is one.
It's wired, it'd be wired for my time, but I had Rob check pricing, those are not cheap. Basically, it's like we're looking.
At least.
We're running out of it, right now, because that was way too expensive, expensive technology, that's, so.
It's not here.
We're going to be putting hand, my hand letters in, any message you want to display on that.
We want some type of resolution.
We need a resolution after exceed.
It was late to say, what are you trying to do?
Because I thought we were going to. I know the quoted price for this sign that Tabus wants to do was eight thousand eight hundred.
I thought that was the one that we all, we say we do one that exceed nine thousand dollars.
Exceed nine thousand dollars?
Oh, okay, okay.
Can I do with that, say that they exceed nine thousand dollars, so we can get that going?
If I understand correctly from an email that I saw earlier, I think there was an issue of what it would cost to run electric even to this, and I think it turned out to be cost prohibitive and that's why more time was taken. So that's my understanding of it, yeah, that it was big money.
Even for the spotlight?
Yeah.
It wasn't so much for the light to the sign, a new name, electric lane has to be run to the restrooms, which is going to be quite expensive.
Yeah, that one's expensive.
I don't know if they're intertwined, my only caution is that now we're talking about there was a concern about money, so they just want to pass something and then have to backtrack.
Well.
Yeah, it's all of it.
Well, that electric going to the new restroom, one way or the other, we're going to have to find the funding for that because that restroom's under construction and we have to have electric to it, and I mean, so I mean.
And that's going to be also having a discussion on that because the fact that that was paid for once, and that's.
We only have one week in between meetings this time, or I mean, obviously, we can have a special meeting if we think we're running out of time to get going and break it down.
Yeah, that's why, because I don't feel comfortable necessarily, and I know, I agree.
There's some kind of caution, all I know is there was some kind of caution, so.
Let's get that information over the next couple of days, and we need to call a special meeting next week for an hour in the evening, we wasn't sick.
Yeah.
Hopefully through October.
That's, yeah, long to put it up, I have to, as it goes, after we get this great project.
All right, let's go to the building development. Parks and Facilities, number two, is just an update on the Dog Park renovations, which I have a pamphlet, which wanted you to see some pictures of what's taking place over there in the last week and a half. It was nice weather, we've gone a lot farther than we expected. Thanks to Joe and the road guys for doing a phenomenal job over there so far. I can't take much of the credit yet, because honestly, they've done most of the work. But our park is coming up here pretty soon. We're hoping by the end of the week to get some of that seeded. Sprinklers on it, they can grow. Hi, Mr. President, you know, I met with Derek and Joe just a couple of days ago, and they had a game plan, they were ready to go, both you guys were organized and they got started immediately and they've been up there and looked at it. Whatever I looked at, it's really come along great and you guys have done a great job. And it's just the way you met quickly and organized, prepared, you had your game plan, game plan, and I'm telling you what, you guys, you put that together like that and it really looks good. I think you've done a good job.
Actually, we need to go real quick, we've been talking about it for months. We gave you the.
Write the books. So we get all the stuff going, I mean, because like I told you before the meeting, we're running out of seating.
Yeah.
We'll get everything ready. And again, to those that utilize the Dog Park, we apologize because it's still closed, but that makes it perfectly functional. I think protecting the people's pets is more pertinent, keeping it open at this point, but again, we apologize for the inconvenience. Okay, let's go to, thank you, Derek, let's go to Parks programming, Mr. Steinberg.
Item number one, gentlemen, in relation to the Dog Park and continuing the preventative measures taken by local entities here in Stark County, the much strut has been canceled by the Stark County Humane Society. Their board made up of Stark County veterinarians and I believe they consulted with the Stark County Veterinary Group, I apologize, I don't remember the exact name, so they thought it was best as well to be preventative and precautious, so they canceled their event in lieu of which we will be helping them out. What shall I go into, item number three?
Let's go to number two. Number two, we represented the township at Plain Local Family Fit and Fun Day last Saturday, the twenty-first, I shared a table with Chief Snyder and the fire folks and we got a little chance to get out, let the folks know what our township's doing in a couple of different departments and kind of brand and mingle and create that community outreach that we were hoping to start, so it was a successful day on all accounts.
Okay, and number three.
In relation to item number one, because of the cancellation of the much strut, we will be holding a donation drive here at Township Hall in November and December to help the Stark County Humane Society with items of need that go anywhere from cat litter and food for cats or dogs in dry and wet forms to bleach and cleaning supplies and things of that nature, so we sent a press release out and let them know when and where they can drop things off and who they can contact here, who they need to point of contacting the Humane Society, be Assistant Director Jackie Gotti, so we're anxious to help them out and continue our partnership as we think it's a good one. Item number four, item number four, October sixteenth, seven thirty AM, we've got together as a group here that the department heads and decided to hold a positive interaction training, and what that is simply, gentlemen, leading into some major events that a lot of our departments work together in, ID, the road department, the fire with safety, obviously concessions on parks and grounds, folks, we're going to get together and talk about kind of the new level of expectations for facilitating and executing events and then discuss how we can be even better at the things we already do well and obviously create some self-assessment and how we continue to improve in all areas moving forward for our customers and our clients sake to create new revenues. Seven thirty to nine AM, I believe, correct, gentlemen, give or take. I forwarded you folks an email today with a PowerPoint that I started working on, thanks to Chief Snyder for taking an hour out of his day and sitting down with me and going through it, and I have to give credit to Chief Snyder, because I basically just stole his presentation, cut out some extra slides and slid it in there.
It worked. Anything works.
So Chief Snyder, Mr. Isino, Mr. Ediger, myself, and Lisa will be conducting the training for all of our teams together at Diamond Community Park.
Perfect. Do you have anything else for Rob? Nice job, Rob. Okay, we will go to Laura Drucker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number one is our liquor license renewal decision. I went down to the hearing with our detective on the Ogres Bar and Grill, liquor license that we objected to the renewal of. The presentation was done primarily by our detective, who did a wonderful job, I would win the court with him anytime, he had a big binder ready to go with mounds and reams of incidents that happened at the property to talk about. The issue came down to this, this was a renewal that they're looking at for essentially this year and next, and we'll get another one for next year, and almost without exception, every incident that we had to talk about was in two thousand twelve. And here we were in two thousand thirteen in August, I think it was August, wasn't it Detective?
I believe so.
When we went down to the hearing and from about the first few days in January until August, there wasn't a single incident. So what happened, essentially, we got to learn at this hearing was, it basically changed the way they do business. They had a GM who was, for lack of a kinder term, a problem, and the bar was running away, that was problematic, they've completely switched their format, they've completely switched their music, it's now primarily a country setting with a completely different demographic, and we haven't had a single incident, correct me if I'm wrong, Detective, since early January this year.
Correct.
So once they saw kind of that that pattern had been established, I think Detective, I walked out there knowing that they were going to issue the renewal over our objection. So if we should happen to have a problem again, I think it's a relatively easy process, it'll come before you every year, if activity should spike out there, blow down and make it for you.
Is there any way we can, let's say something does happen again, and there's shell casings over the park, not like there were, there wasn't some of these incidents.
Sure.
Can we preempt this before having to wait for some type of renewal, because I mean, when I hear calls, as we all did, from residents, not just from Plain Township, but from the abutting city of Canton, I'm not going to sit here on my hands and wait for some formal process down at close saying, oh, hey, it's renewal time.
Right.
Let the chaos continue to renew.
Well, here's where I think you.
I want to squash it.
Understood, here's where I think you make that stand, step in anytime I overspeak what I'm supposed to say, I think that's done through law enforcement, I don't think that's a liquor permit issue. Remember, this is a very specific statute that sets out very specific criteria for what you can and cannot object to and very specific timing, it's all statutory, so to say that we'd be able to get right back in the funnel, that's not provided for in the statute, but I do think that if it should spike again, it becomes an area of heavy interest for our law enforcement.
Yeah, it's going to top up resources again.
Right.
With trying to be proactive, anticipating the incidents that we had two thousand twelve. I know in other occasions, we've brought in liquor control agents to establishments, and the problem on that end is if everything inside is running up to liquor control agent standards.
They don't care what happens outside.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
They let us know that hearing.
We're caught in the middle.
Yeah.
Really, I mean, if there's an incident in the parking lot, you know, the best thing we can do is keep an eye on it, like you said, you know, things are spiking.
I just think it's crazy to have to explain to the public why, you know, whether you're across the street at Ben Franklin's, why at this Ogres, they're finding shell casings out in the parking lot, or why we have to stage our fire EMS guys up the road before they can even come down to somebody who, you know, maybe had a heart attack, maybe bleeding or something because of a hostile environment that, you know, directly or indirectly is created by establishment, you know.
Right. I think it is crazy, but I also think they've been at this a long time, it was very clear to me at our hearing that they were all over that inside versus outside issue, and by them, I mean the hearing officer, not the opposing party, they were all over it, they wanted to know, well, where were those shell casings, well, some of them were in the road, and so, well, that's not their property. So this is big business, you know, and I think that one of the things that, if I'm hearing Detective correctly, you can at least try to do, should we have a spike in activity, is to get liquor control commission up here, not wait for the renewal of the permits, I say, we've got a problem establishment and want you to take a look at.
Well, let's hope, since the first couple of days of January, I hadn't received any phone calls or issue a complaint since then, so I mean, something has changed over there to the positive comparatively to the way that it was being operated before. And I think this individual that owns this establishment, the fact that he changed the venue, he's done some changes, hopefully he's learned that this is not going to be tolerated, and he's going to operate this establishment, establishment the way that it should be operated, like the other ones in the community, so.
I think with, you know, time is going to tell, obviously, I can say I'm fairly satisfied with the new management, you know, and how they're going to run things, and I have a binder on this location as it is, and I will be keeping a close eye on numbers of calls that we receive and what we're responding there to, and if need be, we can get a liquor control agent involved if need be, hopefully not, but I'll be keeping an eye monthly on it, seeing where we're at, call, if the call volume increases.
And I think this operator. Yeah, I think he understands fully that previous activity and what was going on there is not going to be tolerated, so he had two choices to make, and it sounds like he's trying to make the correct one, so let's hope it stays over.
Okay.
Okay, now the big one.
Let me finish that one real quick and say, do you have any desire to appeal that decision? I don't think that our chances of success are high.
Well, based on what you guys reported to us, I think.
Pretty.
Keep an eye on it, make sure that everything stays the way it is.
Okay.
I mean, they have a right to operate the establishment, but they have to operate the establishment that doesn't become a nuisance to everybody around them, and that's what we want to make sure that maintains over there.
Okay, number two is a mutual economic development agreement that has been pushed back and forth, you all have looked at it, worked hard on it, it is essentially a four-way agreement with the city of North Canton, the city of Canton, Plain Township, Jackson Township, to enter into a cooperative, what we'll call an economic development agreement in a specified area that is described here, that Lou, you can kind of take us through, and essentially what it is, is a local collaboration on ways to kind of band together here between these various municipalities and townships to establish mutual economic development area that we can all kind of benefit from instead of fighting each other over and having long drawn out contested hearings and such. So basically what it does is puts that agreement on the table and sets a joint public hearing for the end of October, Jackson Township will be placing the ad in the paper, they are voting on this tonight in their meeting, so I know that all three of you have worked hard on this, all three of you have looked at this, so whoever wants to kind of weigh in, please do.
Let me start here and I'm going to turn this over to Scott, at first I'm going to give Scott a lot of credit for his work with the city of North Canton officials, Eric, while we were meeting with the city of Canton, that helped to bring a lot of this to the table, also to Jackson Township's, the trustees collectively, but Todd Hocke specifically and Randy Gonzalez, John Schneider and the city of North Canton, their entire council, you know, there was a lot of work that went through, and over the years, we all know sitting at this table, and Scott, since you've been on this board and now as long as you've been on it, along with me, we've been talking about agreements along these lines for years, and the positive side of this agreement, it takes everything that happened in the past. And the positive side of this agreement, it takes everything that happened in the past. I don't say it, it washes the, the wounds away with some of the things that occurred over the years between the various subdivisions and the contentious annexation attempts and some of the other things that occurred over there. And it brought all four subdivisions together collectively to finally do what's correct for the entire area and for what's in the best benefit of all four communities. Aside from the economic benefits that this should create, job creation, I think this is going to be the first step in the direction for us to be able to collaborate in other areas, whether it be sharing of services, sharing of equipment, along those lines. I mean, it's, it's limitless what we can do with the beginning of an agreement like this, outside of just economic benefits that are gonna save the communities money. Because we all know, sitting up here at this counter collectively, what we save by collaborating with the sheriff's office for our sheriff's contract, what we're saving by moving our nine-one-one, you know, fire EMS dispatching with the sheriff. There's a lot of other things we can do with these communities collectively that can save our taxpayers even more on top of the economic benefit for new driven tax revenue and job creation in that quarter. So I wanna commend Scott for bringing the city of North Canton to the table, having those discussions and the entire city council of Canton and North Canton collectively for all the hard work they put into this agreement because this was in years in the making. This is not something that was, just started to be tossed around within the last six, eight months. These are just discussions that initially took place, Eric, eight, nine years ago, at least, at least. And here we are today, we finally got it done. This is proof that subdivisions can cooperate, cooperate and I hope it serves as a benchmark and example for the rest of the county.
This, this is a perfect example, I think, for the rest of the state to look at, you know, the state's really pushed this whole innovation, collaboration and so forth. Not only do you have this two, but you've got four entities all that have a strong history, like you said, of a certain point, plodding heads and hey, this is my turf, this is your turf. But at the end of the day, our residents, our favorite residents, won't care about where the water, the standardaries coming from, or whose fire police or EMS are responding when there's that emergency, as long as someone's, they're the quickest, you know, they're in as quick, quicker fashion, you know, resonate, you know. Big thank you as well to Lou and help shepherd that key, because that's the point, you know, that's probably got to be a little squirrely possibly, but by keeping good communication across all, all of the council and boards, I think that was the key to help drive this forward here. So, you know, I think it's the right thing for the residents, it's the right thing for the businesses, you know, when you take a look at this tract of property that we're targeting, it really includes probably about the largest commercial corridor that we have within Plain, when you take a look at our limited, you know, base and, you know, what that's gonna afford us, you know, I think it's all high outside potential, you know, with some of the pending development. It's not fair for businesses like Oak Hill that have been wanting to build, whether it's in Jackson or whether it's here in Plain on the old Burger King lot, to have to sit and wait while we as elected officials in the past may have blunted heads and said, nope, not happening, then it gets thrown out in court and then all we have to do ultimately is doing nothing but chasing away the business and nobody wins. Whereas now, guess what? Your ego and the boundary lines, you're getting checked at the door and it's gonna be a perfect example for what else we can do moving forward, whether, you know, it's, you know, fire districts or, you know, other, other tracts of land that may have other political subdivisions, so. Again, it was collective, it was collective teamwork amongst all this because obviously, you know, the first draft of this, we're sitting here going, wait, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think Lou about, I remember his chair, but you know, he was able to get the language in there. Looking forward to October thirtieth, this, this is something that people shouldn't have had to wait ten, twenty years for.
I think to go along attitude, on behalf of the cities, they should be commended because they've come to the table with the understanding that cooperation is the way to go. And Scott understands this fully. The only way us as subdivisions are gonna survive today and be able to drive revenue to support our existing services is going to be through alternate ways of finding ways to fund those things, like these joint economic development agreements and sharing services and mutual cooperation. Like, you know what, first, you know, the people that we forgot to thank?
The law directors.
I was wondering when that was coming.
I was ready for that.
Well, we save the best for last. Because you guys waited, you guys waited through all the various drafts and, and Eric, especially, you know, looking at this agreement, it's, as much as it's good for all four entities, Eric is the one that really worked the legalities of this agreement that benefits Plain along with the other law directors and made sure that this worked out, that made an agreement that even for everyone, which protects Plain Township sovereignty and own self-interest at the same time. So you should be very highly commended for the work that you did on this. Like I said, October thirtieth, can come, quick, come on. Cool, Scott.
Do we need to take formal action on this?
Yes, you have a resolution that you'll see is law director number two?
Also moved on law director number two, mutual economic agreement.
On second debt. Any further discussion? And the hearing again is scheduled for.
October thirtieth, six o'clock P.M. at Jackson's Administration Building.
Okay, no further discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Gevaso?
Yes.
Thank you again, Eric.
Thank you.
Okay, we will go now to public speaks portion of the agenda. If at this time, if anybody has any concerns they would like to bring to the board's attention, you may do so at this time. We only ask that you give your name and address to the fiscal officer, Mr. Flex, and when he gives you the nod that he has that information, you can go ahead to speak. We ask you to come forward to the podium and speak into the microphone because the, the meeting is not only oddly, oddly recorded, it's videotaped also, so, so that way that they can hear whoever's speaking clearly. Does anybody wish to address the board?
Yes, sir.
Carl White here. Oh, my first.
The committee of Edgewood.
I just need your address, Carl.
I'm sorry. Thirteen oh three Stone Crossings.
Thank you.
On behalf of the committee of Edgewood, the community, those outside the community, we have got numerous and numerous calls of emails and phone calls and thank you, and we'd like to convey that to the zoning board and to the board here, that you listen and what you've done for that community and reducing the zoning and keeping it at the R1. The support of the people really, I, I say it again, has been tremendous and we'd like to convey that to you because they have been listening and you have been listening and we like that, thank you brother. And I listened to you tonight and it's a tremendous, tremendous gratification to hear that you have worked together with the other communities in developing what you're talking about, the tract between Jackson and North Canton. That's, that's wonderful, at least it shows a tremendous support to the community. And again, thank you for your support that you give us and also in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nothing else? Okay, then we'll close public speaks and thank you very much also. We will now go to the approval minutes for September tenth, two thousand and thirteen, and I will so move their approval.
Seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Gevaso?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
There is a need for executive session, being hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board trustee, Stark County Alhaut, to adjourn the executive session at seven oh three P.M. from this regular meeting of September twenty-four, two thousand and thirteen, as authorized by a revised code one-two-one point two-two-G for the purpose and consideration of, one, B, employment of a public employer official, B, dismissable public employer official, D, discipline of a public employer official, F, compensation of a public employer official, and three, conference with a law director or other retained council concerning pending or imminent court action. Six, seven. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Hollis?
Yes.
Mr. Gevaso?
Yes.